All right, so that brings us to our work session. So Mr. Fischel, you had asked for the work session to talk about goals. So I don't know if you had a place where you wanted to start?
Well, yes, there was a little discussion where Superintendent Rotino and I said it would probably be advantageous for him to go ahead and formulate about eighty percent of what we're talking about, and then we can have discussion in adding, deleting, changing, whatever it might be. And I know that we have a document in front of us that has some template and guidelines. And so I guess I would turn it over then.
Yeah, so what I did is I went and looked at and asked a bunch of, asked around and did a lot of things on superintendent evaluations, went to BASSA and OSBA to kind of see what their recommendations were, found the Ohio standards for superintendents that were listed, and there's also an Ohio superintendent evaluation system that's similar to the current teacher evaluation system and principal evaluation system, and took that and used that as a baseline to kind of work from. I also included the current job description from board policy, which is in there as well, walked through some of the steps to get to the point, and provided all of that to you on Friday, as well as kind of put it in here now to really look at what the difference between the standards-based system is and the current description, where the standard-based system breaks into five key categories being first vision, continuous improvement, and focus of district work, then communication and collaboration.
Hold on, where are you?
So I am right now, I'm not about to, I did not put pages out.
Okay, okay, got it, thanks.
So it is the, there's the chart.
Third page.
Actually, yeah, the third page I listed, and I'm also on the fifth page.
So yeah, actually five if you counted them front and back, right?
Can you show us which ones you're on?
It just says superintendent of school.
Thank you.
So it says it's a sample current, sample standards-based job description for superintendent of schools. And basically, it takes the standards and it breaks them up into five key areas. So vision, continuous improvement, and focus of district work, and then the sub standards underneath that. Second one is communication and collaboration. The third one is policies and governance. The fourth one is instruction, and the fifth one is resources, and it mentions objectives for each of those. That is a little bit different than our current job description as listed in Board Policy 1230, which I listed below that, which talks about the superintendent and the expectations of that. And that is the latest job description that both Mr. Placko and I were able to locate when we went to look for the, for what the job description of the superintendent is. Basically, it sums down to all things school that the treasurer doesn't do. So that's really what I, what I came up with this. So to list that, that's a, that's kind of a simple explanation. What I like about the standards-based one and the whole standards-based approach is from that point, you can identify annual objectives. And what I did from that is I took the recent evaluation and the goals presented at that point, morphed them into some evidence and some projects, and then you get some completed target dates for each of the five standard areas. That would be the annual district objective, which is three pages or two pages after.
This one?
Yeah, looks like this.
This one?
Yeah.
Yep.
So this, this is what, you know, for me, it provides not only objectives, and I took the, I took a lot of some of the feedback that I got in the last evaluation, added to it some, how do you show that we're doing it? Because I think that's part of the questions that came out is, okay, if the goal is, so for step one, lead the ongoing execution and refinement of the current strategic plan, ensuring that the initiatives related to safety, climate, and wellness, advocacy partnerships and engagement, fiscal sensibility, and teaching and learning are effectively implemented, regularly assess progress, adjust any challenges, and report updates to the Board of Education to maintain alignment with the district's long-term vision. That sounds great. How do you know you're doing it? And it's such as a checkpoint. So the evidence that kind of came through is really kind of the, throughout this year, what are you gonna, what's going to be produced? So I was just spitballing some things. I said completed facilities plan and recommendations. That was kind of one of the things that we had talked about earlier. Staff recognition and appreciation events and activities. Obviously, that falls under our, you know, the part of strategic plans, advocacy partnerships and engagement. Community and staff survey data, so again, advocacy partnerships and engagement. What does that say about how, how our stakeholders feel, you know, and where are there is for, you know, which areas of celebration, what are areas of growth in that survey data? And then the comprehensive academic plan of continuous improvement. This is in there a couple times. It's also under, under teaching and learning. After a year, I kind of have a really good feel as to where we are and then some ideas as to where we're going to go. Spelling that out, putting that roadmap into place, because we know organizational change takes time. So what does that look like? How are we driving, you know, teacher capacity, efficacy, and, and what are we moving across the way? So that was the first goal that I kind of set up and to work forth. And I think part of that could be, the completion dates, I didn't necessarily spell out because to spell those out without input from, from the board, I think would be, makes it a little bit more of a challenge. I know what we have some as a short-term goal, we have some long-term annual goals along the way as to where we're at. So objective number two, I put establish a comprehensive communication strategy that enhances transparency and fosters collaboration between the Board of Education, school staff, students, and the community. This includes regular updates through Friday packets, board committee reports, newsletters, meetings, video updates, and digital platforms to ensure all stakeholders are informed and engaged. And where, in the evidence of that, you're working through the committee structure and to have those agendas and discussions to include upcoming issues for board discussion to make sure the board's involved in any major changes. One of the things that I did learn this year is even if you read the news, we did a lot, we did a lot kind of in a short period of time, but some of it is I need to press pause. It's a personal thing for me, is I'm a go-getter and patience I'm working on. Community communications and data survey and results. We do that annually, kind of where are we with communicating with the community, and what do those surveys say? How can we improve? We did a lot of things this year that are new initiatives, especially with the monthly videos that we put out, kind of those updates that way, coffees, bringing different stakeholders in, asking for feedback more and more. We want to know how, how we're doing. So considering that, obviously, regular Friday packets and monthly reports, bringing the schools. Did I say?
No.
Okay. Those, those regular Friday packets, monthly reports to, to the board, also bringing the schools in and having the schools present as to what's going on in there. I think that was a, that was a change this year that was really well received. And then direct board communications through email, text, phone calls, or in-person meetings as, as needed. For objective number three, or for standard number three, review and recommend updates to existing school policies and make sure that existing school policies are in alignment with state regulations, educational best practices. Part of it is we have Neola to help with this, but making sure that our policies and administrative guidelines are in line and that they're being followed, and we have ways to make sure that they are followed. Present these recommendations to the Board of, Board of Education for approval and ensure effective implementation across the district. So again, where does that come from? Well, obviously, policy recommendations in line. We have a lot, the Neola packets been delayed because there's a lot that's going into it now, making sure we have those, that they're aligned not only with applicable state, state laws, but, you know, support these new policies and making sure that they are in line with the, the strategic plan, the history and philosophy of the board and also the community as well. And then also making sure we use the Board of Attorney basis to make sure that everything we put in place does line up with that. Number four, I have is lead the evaluation and revision of the district's curriculum to ensure it meets the diverse needs of students and aligns with state standards, oversee the adoption of new instructional materials, and, goes on to the next page, and professional involvement of teachers to enhance instructional effectiveness. So one of the things, the science of reading is a big thing that's on the list, but making sure that we are also pushing a huge personalized learning initiative as part of the teaching and learning in the strategic plan. Well, what does that look like and how do we know that we're doing it? How do we know that it's working? And what do we do when it doesn't? So we're, we talked about instructional rounds, doing these instructional rounds and the data from that, and is it actually being implemented? We also do fidelity checks. So when we're doing a program such as foundations, or what are, what are these fidelity checks? Are we following the fidelity? If we're not, what are we doing to, again, to make sure that we are, making sure that our teachers are capable to and have the necessary skills to implement the program with fidelity. MAP assessment and growth data from the beginning of the school year, you know, we have some baseline data. How much do we grow our students? Where are they coming? Are we growing all students or just certain students? Obviously, then, increase in performance index data, that is the, so we talk about specific state testing, which is, state testing goes back more, it's a one-time deal, but it is important, we did, does have a value. The performance index, as we talked about before, and we will actually talk about, you know, as the report comes out, that is every single test and not just tests that are a certain level. So are we raising the bar across the board? And that really does that, that's the achievement section of it, so of academics. Increase graduation rate from ninety-two percent, which is what our current rate is, how do we increase that? And then also looking at value-added and the growth. Are we growing our students as much as are we getting, are we getting, raising their rates, but are we growing them as well? And then the last one that I put down there is in conjunction with building and district leadership, develop a comprehensive plan that focuses on providing appropriate student support services, resource information, and available education options for all students for the goal of identifying the best path of success for each student post-graduation. So this really looks at how do we get kids and how do we provide our students with the best options moving forward? How do we work with our buildings to make sure that our students, when they meet, you know, as they're going through the high schools specifically, and this really focuses a lot on what our guidance department does, what our administrators, and how they work collaboratively together to make sure that they are ready to go, and that our guidance department isn't just driving students to one, one specific area, where they're doing a number of different things, and giving our students a number of options, because we know college isn't for everyone, and we know all of our students aren't choosing for college. But what do they have when they graduate to think walk out of here with a positive job? And that's also working with some of our career electives that we've created and kind of expanding those, working through Dr. Malacher and her, her department of one, to really kind of push that, push some of those forward. But also, what are we looking at in terms of, you know, providing options for our students that are, that are real world, that are going to kind of meet their needs where they are? So those were the five that I looked at for the standards to put together the draft. The rest are just, the rest of this is just sample what a work plan would look like if we went with this, what a potential formative and midterm evaluation, end-of-the-year evaluation objective performances. There's just some sample documents that I thought would be useful to include as a part of the Ohio superintendent's process. So it's a little bit of a different document moving forward. It's more of a narrative, but really does kind of spell specifically to some of these, these goal rates and performance.
Right, and I know I had spoken to Belinda about this when we were doing the evaluations that we, you know, have the document we have, but it doesn't tell you a lot. I even mentioned using these standards and, you know, maybe, you know, we knew it was too late to start it this year, but to move toward more of a document like this in the future for superintendent and treasurer evaluation, because it is more detailed, you know, you set, as it says, you know, what, what types of things you're working on, that there, it's measurable. I mean, that's what we do for our, the teaching staff typically. But we also may, need to make sure that our policy is aligned with what we're doing, and right now, our policy is different than this. So, just a thought.
In terms of the job description, specifically?
Job description, you know, what, you know, we're doing as far as a performance evaluation. I don't know, I don't have the history in doing this in this district, but I don't know if, you know, how old this is, if it's something that we want to look at and change and be more on keeping what, what other districts or the state is doing as far as superintendent or treasurer evaluation for that matter. I know it, there was no choice with teachers. I mean, we had to go through a certain type of evaluation system.
Yes, I can just give you some history on that. So we, we used to have a very different evaluation form, and we moved to the current one that we have, probably, I don't know, I would say seven, seven years ago, maybe. So we've been doing the current one, and it's not anything that we can't change. You know, we had had discussion previously that we didn't like the one that we were using, so that we, we, over the course of probably a year and maybe a year and a half, we came up with different options, did some reviewing of what other districts were doing, what they were, like, what kind of things that they had on the table. And so we, I think that was way back when Pam Johnson was on the board, and we came up with just a solution, and we moved forward with that, right? And it's morphed a little bit, I think, over the past couple of years to be a little bit more detailed and whatnot. So I don't think there's any objection to changing it. We would just have to sit down and have some conversation on what we want it to look like.
Right. I, I think that, you know, because we did use the old form, and thank you for trying to put that into the new form, I think the point of this meeting was just to develop some expectations, or, you know, just kind of sum up what we're doing, you know, where do we want to go? Obviously, last year was your first year, so. And then I think it's very important, as you said earlier when we were looking at this, that when you say completion date, it could be different for different things, but I think that mid-year, there should be a meeting, whether it's, you know, January, just to see, okay, where are we, you know, do we need to make some adjustments? How do we, you know, what are we doing from this point till June and when we start, you know, the final?
We've had, we've, we've had those every ninety days, every ninety-day checkpoints throughout the first year. They were, you know, there were some kind of, and they were great, and I think that continues on, and I think is a targeted document and targeted goals. They can really speak to kind of where we're at, what, what some of these deliverables are. I, I am a fan of having, you know, both hardcore data that's there to kind of say this is what you need to kind of drive, and not just say, this is, like, I struggle with the fact that there aren't examples, I mean, we're going, you know, we know we need to move the, the needle. And that's the next step is, is how do we move the needle and how do we, and, and as I've explained earlier, patience isn't my best virtue. So having those checkpoints along the way in terms of a map target, in terms of assessment goals, in terms of current data, really to kind of have a, have a feeling as to where we're going, I think is really important. I think one of the things, you know, from an organizational standpoint, we're looking at large organizational change and shift. You know, it's slow until a kid kind of starts to get moving, and so we're, we set the foundation for change. We kind of put some practice in place that are, we know are, are high-yield and research-based. We need to make sure that those practices are being, are being followed. We're providing, we've changed schedules at both the middle school and the high school. We looked at, you know, a new curriculum adoption in K one and two because, honestly, because we were forced to. But what is that, and then now you have to get the familiarity with that curriculum for the first year. Anytime you teach someone the second year round, you, you're better at it. I think high school, you know, secondary teachers sometimes have a benefit, because if you have somebody the first time through that's not near the, their first period is certain terms of second period, they always do better second period, because they're just making adjustments as they go. So the second year through some of this curriculum is going to make some difference in, in that introductory, but I think we look at who we're moving, kind of those, those targets that we're, that we're facing. We've identified some significant areas of need that we know, and we've already put some, put some things in place to make sure that we're moving through. But I also think too, if you miss, you know, there's, there's some catch-up that's coming through. We're still finding some catch-up along the way from our students who perhaps were online or from, you know, the COVID year. We're still, we are still, and those, those gaps that are there have been predicted through studies as to how long it'll take us to kind of make up that time. But we know we're, we know we're kind of getting ahead of that and trying to make up some of those gaps, and we put some things in place to really, you know, allow for personalized learning, independent, independent work, longer time for our core subjects, which we know we need, especially with these, with some of these gap, with some of the things we're seeing, and some of our, some of our results. So we're, you know, but if I just give you more time, it doesn't make a difference. You know, I have to give you more time, and we have to have a structure, we have to have a place, you know, a, a procedure in place to make sure that you're using that time effectively and that you're, you're doing the competency base, you're making sure your students are competent, and what happens if they're not? And that's, that's really kind of the point for, for the ending, but I think we have these, these kind of checkpoints that we can work forward to.
I think it's good for us to be able to hear as a whole board what is in place. I know you do the presentation, the test results, but also what else is happening in the district, hearing more about, you know, what are we doing academically, whether some, you know, one building is, you know, setting aside more time for reading and math, for example. I think that's at La Moot. Or, or Mr. Hall is doing something with the high school on Fridays. I mean, it just helps us because you end up, you know, there's a lot of community members asking those questions, and we need to be able to answer those or be familiar with what steps are taking place for improvement. And then what was the other thing? I think it's just, you know, the way, it's because I knew this, or newer, you're the new guy. Anyway, it's like when I came on board, I didn't, you know, know the process here, but, you know, obviously, this finished up in June. It was presented in July, I'm assuming by two members of the board. I guess, is that the process always, or is it more conducive to have a whole discussion at checkpoint? Because you mentioned ninety days, I wasn't aware of ninety days.
Yeah, so I think we would, we're always going to sit down as a board in an executive session and discuss what we want to go into the document. I think if we wanted to present it as a board, I think we would have to do that in an executive session also. Yeah. So, I mean, that can definitely, again, we can change that. It's what's been done in the past, you know, that we agreed upon what was to be delivered, and then the president and usually vice president sit down with the superintendent and deliver it.
Right. I think it's a good idea, you talked about these ninety-day checkpoints, to, you know, have some conversation, even if it's a report out or whatever, but you're saying if the whole board's involved, it has to be executive.
Going back to the ninety days, were, are there any notes from those ninety days that the rest of the board could look at?
I have them on my computer, I think personal notes.
This is the first I'm hearing.
Well, we agreed to it during our board meetings when we, we established it. So we said, when Dr. Rotino came on, that the vice president, I mean, the president would sit down every ninety days. So that was before you two were on the board, but that was what was agreed to at this.
All I'm saying is it'd be good to see the notes from those.
And we can put that into place, too.
Because obviously, in this scenario, two board members know what that conversation was and three don't.
Yeah, and we can put that into place, too. That's not a problem.
But I think, you know, we're attempting to try to have more open communication, be able to understand what the initiatives are, what's happening, you know, instructionally or in other, in the other area. And, you know, I think there would be a lot of value for conversation periodically with the whole board.
So the only thing I think we have to be careful with, because, you know, our board meetings could be ten hours, you know what I mean? There's, there's a lot going on. So that's part of what the committees do, too, right? So anything curriculum-wise is hopefully coming to the curriculum committee for you to report out on, correct? Anything we put in place for facilities, hopefully Mr. Fischel's bringing that back and reporting out on it. And part of that is, so there's something like either of you would identify during that committee meeting that you'd, you know what, this is what a larger report out, bring it to the entire board. So for instance, with the business advisory last year, when you reported out on all the different career electives coming out, right? We said, yeah, the whole board needs to hear that, right?
Yeah.
So bring it to the entire board. So that's part of, like, I think as the chair of the committee, too, like, if you hear something like, wow, you know what, let's take that to the whole board, let's have a discussion, or whatever, like, we, we would like you to do that.
Well, like, for example, we've had presentations at the board highlighting different things, or each school come and present something. I, you know, I'd like to see more, you know, at pure academic focus on what they're doing differently, or how is this happening, or whatever. I would kind of like to see that. Because some, some changes, I mean, I know a few, but I don't know all.
Sure, and I think as, as we get these committee cycles through, we try to really, when the schools come and present, they're, they're, a lot of times, they're highlighting what's going on in their school and kind of what the big differences. So like, we talked about that Buckeye will be the first one up, because they're the first one alphabetically, but I think they're going to come up and present and kind of say, you know, I haven't talked to Cass or what her presentation is, but when we talk whether it can be really even about the first couple of weeks, how the school's working, flowing, I mean, we made a big change in Buckeye, we put preschool there. But then also, there are other things with the fourth graders being the oldest students that are there now, so kind of some of the impact of them, and having them talk about, hey, we're the leaders of the school, what this, what this means, and how they've, how they've kind of enjoyed, enjoyed the change. I think, you know, when we talked about when the move comes, you know, Dr. Bastler and I have already discussed what that presentation looks like from the standpoint of not only the fifth grader, the fifth grade addition, but also the change in the schedule, and what he's seen the impact for that is. And that'll be a little later as, as the year goes on. So we typically, and we just, I just started with it alphabetical, and then they'll, they'll trade as they need to based on their schedules. Because I do like getting those, them up to ask about some of those things. But I think we can direct them to, hey, make it a little bit more programmatic, a little bit more focused on academics, which is absolutely perfect and fine. And kind of some of the things that they're, they have come and said, these are the things that we are really, when they're presenting, they're presenting the things that they're proud of to that. So I think when the high school presents, we'll, we'll bring some Auburn Academy kids and have them come out and say, this is what we, this is what we like about it, this is what we love. And I think that's, that's going to be, you know, some of the change in, now that we're in year two, you know, there is, there is a different feel to it. There is a, it is a feel of kind of still drinking from the fire hose, but it's gotten a lot smaller. And it's also the, the changes there, because I know what to expect now, and I kind of see where, where some areas are, and we've already looked to address those, but at the time we noticed, it's sometimes after the fact. And so now that we're there, we're, we're in a preventive way to kind of look at making some small tweaks and continuing on to make these, these larger tweaks and working on the system that we have established to really drive a lot of this stuff. And I think we have the, the backbone and the structure there to do that. I think one of them is, you know, even the introduction of the portrait of a rosette beaver, and what that looks like, and kind of how your lesson solicits to focus around that, and why these skills are important, as well as also using a number of data sources and to drive instruction and kind of triangulating with multiple data sources to look at where our kids are succeeding and where they're not. And I think that's, that's been a different change, is a lot of our PD focuses come to that, but until you show what this means and what this is, and getting the capacity there, we train and coach specifically on how to do value-added, what all value-added means, to then start working with all of our, all of our teachers to work and target on that. But that's, you know, when you look at things like that, which we talked on the report card, that's a three-year composite, so that's not an easy, hey, here we have a year and we're done. That's a, that's a, that's a three-year crawl, and in some cases, out of a, out of a bigger, bigger deficit. But, you know, in moving forward, we recognize, you know, we need to absolutely raise the bar. It's, it's things like, you know, practicing on the same method that you play, you know, using the, so I think we're, I am really excited for the progress we're going to make this year, and, and I think that, you know, I think Dr. Malacher has done a commendable job in getting things into place. We've got a great, fantastic MTSS program that we're getting up and running, so giving kids what they need to make sure that they're successful, that's called Mrs. Lanning's area of focus, and really kind of have a person, or the people in place, and a strategy and a skill set in place where you go to these meetings and you start to see these data meetings, and they're pretty good. So I think we'll have them come and talk about what that looks like. So you get to hear from some of our special supervisor, so she can do a report on that. You know, it'll take up, you know, an hour and a half or so.
But some of this terminology.
Absolutely.
Like, I know what value-added is, but not.
No, we, we talk in acronyms, so I think one of the things.
I know, we, we need to break it down, so what does it mean?
And one, so value-added is where they are, it's, it's measuring growth for the year, and it's, it's a really technical term. It's, it's really how much value has been added in that student. So depending on where the grade you are, did they maintain their spot in line from the state, or did they meet the predicted level? So it just depends on, on the grade and the level. We'll get more into that. One of the things I would like to do is discuss a, you know, a date for a soon, a new work session as the report card comes out, because we would like to really break down the report card in depth. I know that, you know, Dr. Malacher's really excited about that, but unfortunately, the place.
About the report card?
Yeah.
Breaking it down.
Yeah, breaking, the placeholder that we had isn't quite going to work for her.
I think I did that in the nineteen eighties, I don't break it down anymore.
In what month?
It, either, yeah, in October would be the perfect, because it, we would like a, a separate work session for it. The work session placeholder we have on the tenth, we had to, as I mentioned before, we had to move the Kinston football game to. The work session placeholder we have on the tenth, we had to, uh, as I mentioned before, we had to move the Kinston football game to that. Football game here. On that night, so that's not necessarily conducive to a, a board meeting on the report card.
And then go to the game.
And then go, that would be great. Yeah, yeah, time for, you know, time for my son to hit his drum, that's, uh, but, um, it's, I, I think that's, that needs to come shortly to really kind of look at not only, you know, how we scored, but what are we doing? So, I think there's a yes and to it.
So, which board meeting are you?
We're, we need to schedule a work session, um, in October.
So, can I ask right now, is everybody, you wanna just see if everybody's okay with the seventeenth?
Is it already built in?
The, the tenth is built, built in, but that's the day now, we have a football game that day, they had to move it.
So, we're not having the tenth meeting.
Right, so we're okay for the seventeenth. Seventeenth, good for you, for work session? You have something? Well, you're important to be here.
He already told me I had to be, otherwise I would say carry on without me, but I have something scheduled.
Okay.
We did do the one last year during the day, uh, we did it at seven thirty in the morning, and we did that, and, I mean, we could record it and post it as well.
You did that in the morning, but it was, if you prefer to do it in the evening, that's fine, you can do the seventeenth.
Well, I just worry about the public, so if anybody wants a ten, I don't know who wants to come at seven thirty versus an evening, I don't know, so.
Are we stuck on Thursday?
I was gonna say, can we do anything else the week of the tenth?
The fifteenth too, if you want to do Tuesday.
Uh, I, I'm fine with either.
Eighth or the fifteenth, Mr. Keeney?
Pardon me?
Eighth or the fifteenth, what good for you?
Either one.
Oh, the fifteenth, I'm in Columbus, I'm on my way there.
The eighth works for me.
The eighth, okay.
Yeah.
The eighth?
Yeah.
Then that would be fun.
Hold on, I got a whole bunch of things, but I don't know, there's really things I have to go to.
I mean, we also asked for information in October about the facilities, is that at our board meeting?
It was at the regular session unless it's done, unless it's done earlier.
Yeah, we, we are, we are really trying to get better.
Right, okay.
So, the eighth would be fine.
Right, so can we make a note for Mr. Placco to move our placeholder to the eighth? Yeah, he can remove the tenth and move it to the eighth, thank you.
And stop referring to it as a placeholder.
Yeah, it's no longer a placeholder, yeah, it's a work session. Right, um, so let's speak about the grades, so coming back to evaluation, sorry. What I've heard, uh, again, notes coming out on the ninety day check-ins, check, um, we'll put an executive session on the calendar. It'll be, uh, January, February, so that we can discuss mid-year assessment, the board can discuss, miss you, uh, mid-year assessment, sorry. Um, and then there'd be an executive session on the calendar for June, July, for the board to discuss end of year assessment.
Probably January and June would be better to give time to.
We'll try, but.
Didn't we do the July this year, cause the final presentation?
And again, I think we'll try, it just depends on what else is going on, yeah. But it has to be though, I mean, to get things done. As far as using a new form, uh, do we prepare this for the next school year, school year, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six? Or do we, cause I'm not hearing any opposition about using a new form, correct?
Good with it?
That was something that I.
Good with it? Okay, so.
Work through the personnel committee to do that.
Yep, so, um, do we continue with what we do, just have those discussions? Or do we wanna make changes to bring it to this form for the remainder of this year?
Well, we probably need to take the time to look at what was on the old form, and I know you translated it.
I did some crosswalking, I didn't quite take it all, there were, there's a lot of similarities. I think the one that, that the standards-based one is more of a, where's the, where's the focus of the district? Where's the board focus? And kind of taking a lot of the standards of all things school and kind of specifying, specifying it for what was the focus area for the school year. I will say, when you look at it, it is, it's, it's aggressive for what I've kind of put down, there's a lot. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, and I'm not, I'm not ashamed, I'm not shying from it, but I think it truly is, um, when you look at the evaluation forms that they provide, as, as their recommendations, a lot of it is, you know, it's a, it looks like more of a collaborative evaluation, where, you know, we would meet in the executive session, and I would, this is my vision, this is what I'm sharing as evidence of my methods, um, this is where we're going, this is the targets, this is what, this is what the needs. And also, this is, these are some of the struggles and some of the hangups, um, and to have some of that, cause I, I know for a fact I'm not perfect, uh, and there's always area for improvement, and we're always up and to grow.
Well, almost no matter what template you use, you can dive in pretty deeply on anything, so. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a good template, and, and where anyone wants to focus a little more attention, they can. And in, in general, a lot of, probably eighty percent of it's gonna be cookie cutter, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are very definitive, I mean, you already started on the facility plans, and, you know, we're having the recommendations. But as far as, let, let's just say, academic improvement, we're not aware of everything that's being done. So, it's hard to help with expectations if we don't know what.
Sure, I mean, you could turn it into a ten-hour meeting if you wanted to.
I really don't, um, I'm still at the point where my kids like me, uh, so. But, um, I, I think that there is, there are some places we can go to, and also, when you look at communications, if you did wanna set up like a weekly or bi-weekly meeting, I'd be happy to, I'd be open to it in person in my office. We can talk academics, we can focus that, as we even work on committee agendas and what that looks like, even to make it a part of the committee check-in along the way. I, I do like the idea of really leveraging our, our board committees to have that as, as the pathway into, into the whole board, but to talk about kind of, here's some focus things that we're doing, and some focus areas, and, and leveraging that for the next things, instead of just kind of some cookie cutter, let's, let's check it off, cause we're done.
It's my understanding, we, at one point, did not have the committees and the board meetings were endless?
Very endless.
They were, they were, or consented agendas at one point.
Midnight, yeah, that was pretty standard, remember that? Unfortunately, yes, yeah.
So, I, I, I do think those committees can be leveraged, uh, in a way to really work with, um, you know, collaborative, collaborative agenda creation, things like that, um, things like real, you know, true, true discussion, and obviously, they're open to the public, which is great, cause their input, sometimes, or at least I'm hearing, and then they'll, you know, the, those who come to them sometimes will stick around and give, give some real feedback as to what they feel, or give me a call, or send an email and kind of follow up, and have, have some great points. I think the one that business advisory kind of has that tone to it, um, the work that's come out of that has been super meaningful, really put our district in the right direction, and we continue to grow from it. So, I think if we can have other ones that have that kind of feel to it, and not just that, hey, we're checking this off and putting these things on the agenda, but really have some, you know, some time upfront for some meat and potatoes to really get to. You know, here's our, here's our goal, here's our vision, here's where we're going, um, and then also, by the way, here are the things that are gonna be on the agenda, and any questions on those items? Cause those are things that we can also take care of in an email, um, so.
One of the things that you listed was the regular Friday packet, monthly reports, and I know, um, you know, that was discussed. But, um, one of the things that would be helpful also, I think, is maintenance updates. Like, for example, I, I just happened to go over to Buckeye to just kind of get a, a look at how the preschool fit in. You know, I just chose that school, and, um, you know, I wasn't aware that there were two, one shed that's coming down, that's really dilapidated and infested, and then the other, there's, there were two gravel things, and they are building too new. We didn't know that, I wouldn't have known that if.
Those, those typically.
But I'd like to know, and part of it is storage for preschool and to replace the other one they're tearing down.
Yeah.
But we, I think we should know about it, cause, I mean, it's, it's a project.
We've communicated those through the, through buildings and grounds, and Mr. Arlessa kind of says, hey, these are the projects that we're going up on.
Okay, I didn't know that, cause I'm not.
Right, uh, but we can, we can somewhat summarize some of those even on a monthly, and then Friday packets.
Just to be clear, I don't think those were announced, those would have been announced as something that had been started. And so, I, I think just the idea of saying, okay, look, we're looking at building a couple sheds is just, well, I mean, it's just a, it's just a little FYI.
Yeah, we can look.
Just a note, I mean, if it's Friday packet or just a note.
Sure, we can absolutely put some of that.
I mean, it could, it could, uh, you know, you don't wanna get too bogged down in process. I mean, Mr. Arlessa could just throw out a little, hey, FYI, this is what we're doing.
I would, would, what I would hate to do is have more time spent in typing out and.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Arlessa could just send out an email, quick email, saying, okay, hey, this one we're doing.
I guess I challenge with that though, cause then we could end up ourselves, like, I get, with my, being a parent in the district too, like, the number of emails I get is a lot, so I just, you know, again, I love the Friday packet personally, cause it's one place. Okay.
We can work on how we, how we do that, we have, we have regular conversations with them, so. It could be a simple Thursday morning check-in, hey, what are you doing in the next couple of weeks, so we can update.
I guess the question still comes back to you, are we doing this new form for twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
My impression, my opinion is it's an improved approach, cause it's more detailed.
Right, but I, so I guess I'm asking, I agree, um, but is it, are we okay to continue with the rest of the year like, like we are talking about? We'll have a mid-year put on the calendar for this year too, but then make sure we're thinking about how to fill this form out for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So, would we do this in the next one, or in the following year?
Would we do it with the next one that would come up like in May or June?
Yeah.
That's what I think, too.
You guys okay with that?
Uh, yeah, that's fine, I mean, it, um, definitely gives us more food for thought, because this other one was so simplistic.
I can, I can even, as we work through that, kind of hybrid it, so we see where the strengths and the weaknesses are. So, I'd be willing to kind of pilot it. Yeah, give feedback along the way, so as we're doing the, the, the first one, there can also be, so, hey, this is where we're at.
It's important, right, that, I mean, you can, you can impress your own value system on it as you see it, you know? And, you know, focus more here, less there, or whatever, and if, like I said before, if anyone has any, you know, desire to go in somewhere else, okay. But, I mean, you, you're the one that knows what's going on, so if you put the value system on there, then it'll be easier for us to progress through it.
I love the idea of a little test pilot.
Yeah, I will, I will happily kind of clean this up and try to align it more to the, to the other one, and we'll, we'll work with both at the same time, so we can.
And then, I mean, obviously, we have to look at both and see, you know, cause you put some suggestions down here, which is, you know.
And I took these suggestions and these objectives from the prior evaluation and goals. So, it's nothing, it's nothing that's off-base or coming from left field, in fact, I'm really trying to, trying to tweak them, and then use more standards-based language, and then also give evidence for, hey, I'm doing this, and this is how.
And I know we've talked about, um, you know, enrollment, um, but I think just communication-wise, just to have a better picture, you know, on what the enrollment looks like, cause I think that we, we ended up realizing that there was some real overcrowded areas, and I wasn't aware of them and how space was being used, and plus, we're always looking at rightsizing the district as far as staffing. I think we do a good job, I haven't got, we haven't had our meeting, but, um, you know, providing, um, you know, tutors and aides and people to assist in the process. But I just wanna make sure, I mean, we had a lot of discussions in the focus groups this summer, and I wasn't aware of some of the numbers in our elementary buildings.
So, when you, and I, I think too, not to, there's a lot that we inherited along the way with that too, and I see we have, I kind of looking at it and inheriting. There's, you know, in coming through with recommendations as to where we move and, and how we move and how we pivot, I think it's a really important, important concept along the way, cause there's a, there's more than just, um, you know, there's, there's, there's enrollments and spaces and issues places as well. What we did to some of this work this summer, um, and even moving forward is, you know, we fixed some major issues, and now we're, now we may have created some, some ones that we need to tweak as we move forward, and what that looks like and, and how we tweak them, but there, we've got some hands on projected numbers, which is a really good thing. So, we, we got our hands on live birth studies, which really does help us. Now, it's just live birth through districts, not for the individual elementary schools, so there's some, there's some extrapolation. You're never right anyway, uh, when you do it, and it's, but there'll be, you'll see some evidence of that in this, uh, tomorrow's Friday packet, so stay tuned. But you'll see kind of some of that as to what we have from there, and then also kind of where we are currently with enrollment, uh, moving forward. And also, kind of really, when we, when we, again, when we built the new buildings, we built them on twenty-five, what are we seeing based on students in our younger grades, knowing we're getting our target classes, or what's working better? And so, looking at, looking at data and truly having those discussions as to, is really adding another first-year teacher prove to be successful? Or is it really truly adding stronger dimensions in small groups, and what, what are we seeing in, in growth? We have a great kind of mini-study, if you would, um, along the way. So, I think those are, those are little things we can do to really look at what our next spaces are, and also, how we utilize our, our time and space and what that is. And even with, you know, I would even say with, you know, fifth grade LaMooth, how successful, even in the first month, now, it's the first month, it's not long out, but I'll tell you, they, they love it, um, and then how they fit. And what we can see from, part of it is that, you know, the study with the gray man too, does, does three years do better than, you know, do we see less of the transition and the dev, and can we track those? And I think those are all things that we are gonna absolutely track along the way, because those are things that we've said forever. Well, the issue is, is this, well, the obvious outcomes don't show that that's the issue, then the issue's not that. But again, those are longer studies, but those are kind of things that cite the nerd in me.
Yeah, um, and we've talked about preschool, you know, trying to get them earlier. Obviously, we have the change in facilities now, but looking forward, where, you know, do we need them the most? What, what do they need ideally, because we talked about, most preschools, it's nice to be able to have a bathroom in the room, like we have in the kindergarten rooms at, um, the newer buildings. But also, you know, which schools really have an influx of students needing that? We've talked about that in curriculum, and whether we need to expand it or relocate it when space is available, I don't know. Those are things we need to talk about, because it's like that jumpstart early intervention, it's gonna pay off down the road.
But just to be, that's not part of the goals in the evaluation.
No, no, I'm just saying that it goes back to the numbers, what our facility is, being able to plan effectively, timely, and not getting, um, you know, I'd rather be more proactive.
To be, to be completely honest, I'm not sure we actually collect the data on if they've attended preschool and where. I don't know if we do that in enrollment or not, do we?
For kindergarten?
Yes.
I believe there is a spot on the form that speaks to preschool experience, don't quote me on that, but I'm almost positive.
So, I think we can look at that, if we, if we pull it in an enrollment form, we can look at it, and I can get you some numbers as to how many students have, um, and so, we can look at kind of what that looks like in terms of historicals. So, if that's something that you'd be interested in, we can absolutely look at kind of where we are with that, um, to see that.
So, as far as the assessment and objectives, I think the agreement is, we'll use the new form beginning twenty-five, twenty-six, so that'll be when we get together in June, July timeframe to discuss that. I'll put, send notes out on the ninety-day check-ins, and then we'll have executive session, mid-year performance, January, February, to discuss and, and come up with an assessment at that point, all right?
And then, as far as, um, you know, the evidence that was written in here, um, can we send, you know, our, some additional ideas for some of that? Cause some of it was, like, for example, the first one says, comprehensive academic plan of continuous improvement that meets the needs of each student and grows teacher capacity and efficacy. This plan shall include, and it's blank, so.
So, I think that's what he's trying to like, say that he's going to work on over the next, cause we're not gonna use that this year, but he's, yeah.
So, so this is, yeah, this was the pilot, that just instead of, and then I looked at that, and that is also pretty close to the same, the same evidence that would be, and I like doubling up, so don't get me wrong, I don't wanna say that we're not gonna do that, but that's also some of the same evidence as, um, you know, the under-teaching and learning, so the evaluation and revision of district curriculum. So, so we're, we're talking about those sorts of both things, I think it's, it's really is a, is a strength, and I think somebody do over.
Yeah, I would like to see, like, have the opportunity to crossroad the data from old to new, and then, and then we can assess in January, February, whatever.
So, I'll have some more, as we go through in January, I can continue to fill this in.
With the end service and the start of the school year, has some of the, um, test results been reviewed with the staff?
We've, we've not only done that, um, but we've also looked at, um, how we do the, the form regardless of the way. And we did some even at the end of last year.
Okay.
And it's, and it is a part of their, of teachers' com- and principals' comprehensive evaluation process. They have to do that as part of, they have to use that data as part of their decision-making, and they have to use high-quality student data. They have to do that as part of, they have to use that data as part of their decision-making and they have to use high-quality data here.
Great. So again, just because the work session was focused on, um, the evaluation and objectives, um, we're good at this point? I think good direction?
Well, I think, I think we've taken a step forward. So I think that's the idea of keep building, right?
Yep. All right. Perfect. Um, we do have a couple consent agenda items. The first consent agenda item is finance and audit.
You got the biggest response of the day.
Can you edit that out?
On these consent agenda items, um, for finance and audit.
Sorry, remember back.
Motion to approve the items listed on the finance audit consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Item A.
Item, item A, yes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, take a roll, please.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Glenda Rossi.
Aye.
Laurie Kreneski.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. We also have a consent agenda item for, or consent agenda items for personnel.
Okay, this, this one I don't want to do because I don't have enough history on this and story. I thought we were just doing a work session and we haven't had our committee meeting and maybe I can get those questions answered in committee meeting. So I'd like to skip six for tonight and take that to the.
We've got hires and resignations. We have approved.
So if there's any discussion you want to have.
I, I did have, I had a chance to talk to Mike, cause Gary said.
Can we make a motion first and then we have discussion?
What, uh, kind of motion do you want? Because I really don't want to do it.
But we, then you'll have to vote nay if you don't want to do it. I mean, it's on the agenda and we didn't amend the agenda.
So you can pull it out and, and open it up for discussion.
Well, make the motion for the, everything in there and then you ask for discussion. We can discuss what question do you have and see if we can get answers and then.
But just as a matter of formality, should this stuff go through committee first?
Some of these are just standard hires and.
Well, I, I understand this, but now we're looking for a rate increase. And I don't have any information about the history of this rating. The other items I understand, but now we're asking to give a raise for something. I have no background information on what's involved in the raise, what the current rate is, what the market rate is. I don't have that information. That kind of information I would get in the committee.
Well, again, so we can, so you're talking about the security rate increase.
Correct.
Okay, so.
We can have that discussion after we call for the motion.
Right. We can ask the questions here at the table and if you're not in agreement with it, then you could.
But, but what if the, the, the answers aren't there?
Then we could always pull it out and vote on that at a later time.
Okay. So, um. I'm going to have a motion to approve items listed on the personal consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, with the exception of, um.
You get, you just got to read it A through I and then we'll have discussion.
Motion to approve items listed on the personal consent agenda, A through I, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second.
And now we have discussion. So you have some questions?
The discussion is, uh, the security rate increase. All that's asked in here is that resolution to prove, approve an hourly rate of forty-five dollars per hour for security services by various deputies from the Lake County Sheriff's Office for extracurricular activities and other after-hour events effective August first, twenty-twenty-four. See, now we're going retroactive, which is okay. And that's why I don't see why this has to be done tonight. Now, what is the current rate? What do the other school districts in Lake County pay? Those are the questions I would like to see answered.
So just to address, we send the, um, the agenda out forty-eight hours in advance so that we can, we can review, be prepared. And if you want to ask questions, like I know, um, Ms. Brewster came in today asking questions. So that's part of that, that reason, the process. But Mr. Dr. Rotino, can you?
Sure. Uh, our current rate is, uh, this, this came about from Deputy Fitzgerald. We ask our, our local sheriffs to stay in as a security, so they are sheriffs, they're police officers. A lot of the districts, and we know one specifically matters fifty dollars an hour. He figured, he thinks that forty-five dollars an hour will get adequate coverage. He says a lot of people will not sign up for these and it's all volunteer. We can't force it. Um, will not sign up at forty dollars an hour. That was a feedback he's heard. For a couple, it's for a.
Current is forty?
Last year, last year we raised it for a couple of specific events because we needed, uh, for the Manner game was one specifically, cause we wouldn't have people sign up. At the forty-five dollar an hour rate, we had everything full. At the forty dollar rate, we had nobody showing up and we had, you know, six thousand people here. So it is, it is important to kind of for our overall security. We contract officers, um, during the day, but those after events are all, are all paid at, at this rate and they're all employees. And they are open to, um, all of the, all of the Lake County sheriffs, so.
What do the other districts pay besides Manner?
So Manner pays fifty, I believe. From Mascheraleo. And I know the period.
See, those are the kind of information I'd like to add, cause I, I'd like to see comparables. And I don't understand why they don't sign up for forty. I think that's a darn good rate. Uh, but you know, that's their choice. So, uh, I just, I, I just like to see the comparable information. So are they being reasonable or not reasonable?
They, they are being reasonable. We know that.
But we don't, we don't know that without the information. That's what I'm saying. I don't have a problem paying forty-five if the market rate is forty-five, but I don't know if that's the market rate.
I can add one small piece. This isn't necessarily school-related, but I had an event in Madison, in the Madison Police Department, it's sixty dollars an hour.
So I'll just give one other feedback. In talking with Deputy Fitzgerald about this, it really truly was, he said by just raising this about five more dollars, it would help us be competitive with the other schools around.
But I don't know that. You know, we, we don't have.
I'm just providing you that information.
Yeah, that's third-party information, an interest in third-party information. So I would just. I wouldn't have a problem with forty-five if the market says it's forty-five.
Well, Manner's paying fifty, forty-five.
That's Manner, but that's one, one comparable.
That's one of our major competitors, especially when we're trying to cover events.
I'm saying nights.
So do, uh, Lake County deputies work at the Manner School District? That's how, they don't use city?
So what happens? They put up a big signup list and it may seem like five bucks, but if I have a chance to make five dollars.
My question is, uh. Yeah, I'd like, when I talked with Madison, um, they said they use Madison City Police before they use, uh, Lake County.
Well, they may, but depending on the size of the coverage needed.
But what you're saying, in Manner, they take both. Whoever signs up first gets.
Correct.
Okay, I just wondered, because obviously different places do things differently, right?
And we, this is really just truly to try to stay competitive.
Okay, and so we're competing with Manner?
Well, and probably will be, like, I mean, all the schools in the area. So that's the information I'd like to see. What do they pay?
So, um, are we, do we have anything coming up that we are not filling at this point?
We have homecoming. We have, um, we have all of our home football games. We have a home football game this Friday. I think we have filled this home football game Friday. We have, um, we have them at other evening events. We'll have one at specific evening events, our dances, um, not only here, but also at Lamouf. We have one who sits there and stays after for hours. So basically anything where we have a chance for public to, to come in or, and, and interact with, we have, um, we have deputies there.
There was one volleyball game.
Yes.
And so I think it's any home.
Any, any home type of public event that they come in through.
Is there any, if you want, I mean, we could just pull this out and go on it separately?
The, also the, the, the funds from that, um, with the exception of like, they do come from the event ticket sales. So it's a, it's a self-funding. Yeah, it's, it's offset. It's not on the general fund.
Okay.
Does that across the board always or not?
Depending on the.
Depending on the event.
Yeah, not everyone's going to raise that money to pay it, so.
The, the athletic ones come out of the, yeah, or the athletic budget. Depending, again, depending on whether the charging mission.
Can it wait, can that item wait till the board meeting we have in two weeks?
Sure, because it's retroactive August first, so I don't see why it can't wait.
But I, I, I'm just trying to find some other ground.
I think the challenge of that is the payroll.
Oh, it creates an issue for.
Payroll issue.
And just being able to make sure that we can fill the bets between.
And to get those, and we have a lot of events filled and if we say it probably will, uh, as to this is what it is, we can definitely make sure we get those.
So Ms. Keeney, you can make a motion to pull it out. If somebody wants to second it, then we can vote on it. Is that, yep?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion whether we pull, um, A and vote on it separately.
I can second it.
So our consent agenda approval will be. Well, we got to vote on this.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, right?
Okay. Um, Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Glenda Rossi.
For pulling it out?
Yeah, for pulling it out.
Thank you. Aye.
Denise Brewster?
This is, this is for pulling it out.
Yeah, um, aye.
Laurie Kreneski?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried to pull consent for the item A out, which now means that the consent agenda is B through I.
So we can pull the board for that?
Uh, Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Glenda Rossi. Laurie Kreneski?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to consent agenda for buildings and grounds.
Are we going to do item A?
We have to vote.
Do the actual.
Motion for A.
We pulled it, are we pulling it to just?
Put it on the next agenda?
I, I thought we were pulling it to vote on it separately.
We were going to vote on it separately.
We pulled it out of the consent agenda so that it can go on to next month. So we don't have.
This would be part of a separate.
To go on it separate.
No, you pulled it from the consent agenda to be voted on separately tonight.
Okay.
Tonight.
Thank you.
So I'll take the role on that.
We have a motion for that. I'll second it. No problem.
This is a motion to approve item A for only on the consent agenda. Dennis Keeney?
Nay.
Glenda Rossi?
Aye.
Laurie Kreneski?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Nay.
And Scott Fishel?
Nay.
Motion, sorry, fail.
So I just want to be clear, we can't vote on that again.
I need to make that phone call.
Like, we can't, we can't vote on that again. So, no.
No, I think we can bring it up again and vote on it in the future.
I don't know. Like, I thought, I thought like once we pass the agenda item.
No, you can.
We can bring it up as many times as we want. Yeah, okay, just to be clear.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, we'll pull together for.
Right, well, that made him. Sure, thanks.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda for buildings and grounds.
Okay, let me get that. Make a motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds operations consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Item A, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion, I would like to ask a question and discussion.
Yeah, go ahead. We're saying anything.
I, I was going to say, I was just going to ask a question. So this is, um, the bus routes. And so have they changed substantially or are they mostly the same or?
They've, they've changed a little this year. Um, we are still changing some of them as we go, but this is kind of just the general. We have to have the bus stops approved. So these are the bus stops.
No, no, I understand. And I was just curi-, this is more curiosity.
So have they, yeah, they've, as students are moving out of school, we, we shift them and, and change them based on ridership, so they're not always in the same.
So it's general realignment as normal would be?
Yes.
I mean, I, I was just asking that out of curiosity, just so everyone knows, this is just normal business, normal movement.
So if you ever have a chance to go over and watch them plan the routes, I'm like, yeah, it's, it's insane. So.
Yeah, it's moving pieces, right?
Some of them have, some of them have shifted as we try to shift to more cluster stops to be more efficient. Cause there's a, they do want to be efficient as they work through. At, at times going into certain call attacks and all that makes it, it makes it a bigger challenge. So it does, um, so those are kind of what Mr. Andre is working on in his second year. Um, putting this through is, is to make us, you know, more efficient and get us, get us to where we need to be quicker.
Well, that's great. So any further discussion?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to say, I know, um, transportation is crazy at the beginning of the year, trying to make sure everybody's taken care of, nobody's left behind, all those kind of things. But, um, I know parents a lot of times have questions. And in some cases, um, I'm just aware of one situation in a neighborhood where they wanted to change a stop. They finally did get an answer today, but they've been asking for several weeks. So, um, you know, my concern is, you know, that somebody's returning their call in a timely fashion and certainly within a week at the beginning of the year. But I just want to make sure that communication is there.
Any further discussion? Can you call the role, please?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Glenda Rossi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Aye.
Laurie Kreneski?
Aye. Motion carried. All right, next meetings, we have Buildings and Ground Committee meeting September seventeenth at seven thirty a.m. Curriculum and Programming meeting September twenty-third at seven thirty a.m. Finance, Audit and Personnel Committee meeting September twenty-third at eight thirty a.m. And then Board of Education meeting is September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. But we do have a working session before that at five p.m.
Right.
And one on, um, October eighth.
And we can add October eighth. And that'll be at six p.m. All right.
And just to clarify, the work session on September twenty-sixth at five p.m. topic?
Uh, it's training. I sent a note out to the board, an email out.
No, no, I just, 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 just information.
Yeah, it's training on, like, ethics training, board, um, uh, boardmanship. Uh, so we're still, um, I'm working with Mr. McIntyre to put that all together.
Thank you.
And I lost my, one second, cause I have a new executive session announcement. Thank you, I'm sorry. All right, so that brings us, um, make a motion to adjourn to executive session at, eight, eight twenty-five p.m. Be it resolved that the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby adjourns its executive session at eight twenty-five p.m. To discuss other matters required to be kept confidential by state and federal law and personnel matters relating to the employment and/or appointment of compensation of one or more public employees. The Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby designates all matters discussed in this executive session as strictly confidential and finds that this designation is warranted because of the status of these matters and the need to preserve confidentiality to properly conduct the business of the Board of Education.
I'll second.
Thank you. And can you call the role, please?
Can I just get a point of clarification? Was this combining the original amendment?
And the amended.
So it's going to be one, one executive session?
Yep.
Laurie Kreneski?
Aye.
Glenda Rossi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Motion carried.